Good evening. If you would, please silence your cell phones. And be advised that these proceedings are being recorded. For those of you that are physically present in the council chambers, welcome. We're glad to see you. If you desire to speak during the council meeting, please complete a request to speak form. They're available at the front entrance and present it to our city clerk. Speakers physically present and participating via Zoom will be called upon at the appropriate time. Each person will be allowed three minutes to speak. This time, I will convene the regular meeting of the City Council for Tuesday, July 12, 2022. Invocation tonight will be offered by Pastor Harold Cortez of the Seventh Day Sabbath Church, and our Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilmember Doug Wilson. If you would, please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
It's a great honor for me. And now we're going to address God in Heaven. Now unto the King Eternal Invisible, the only wise God, be honored and glory forever and ever. Father, we humbly request that you may preside tonight over the council meeting at Grand Terrace. Please give guidance, knowledge, and direction on the right decisions over every point of the agenda. I request a blessing upon Mayor Darcy McNaboe, the City Council, Sylvia Robles, Bill Husey, and Jeff Allen, also country officials, Don Rowe, Jason Anderson, Don Montse, and John Mahon. Thank you, Father, for being so gracious to us, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
[inaudible]
Thank you, Councilmember Wilson. Madam Clerk, may we have roll call, please? Councilmember Jeff Allen?
I'm here.
Councilmember Doug Wilson?
I am here.
Councilmember Sylvia Robles?
Present.
Mayor Protem, Bill Hussey?
Present.
Mayor Darcy McNaboe?
Present.
Thank you. Madam, you have a call. Thank you. Do we have any reordering of additions to or removal of items from the agenda?
No additions or deletions.
Thank you. Okay. No special presentations tonight, so we'll move on to our consent calendar. Consent calendar items are expected to be routine and noncontroversial. They are to be acted upon by the City Council at one time without discussion. However, any council member, staff member, or citizen may request the removal of an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Are there any requests to remove a consent calendar item? All right. I'll entertain a motion then.
I move adoption of the consent calendar.
I'll second that.
All right. Motion by Councilmember Robles, second by Councilmember Allen. Are we set to vote? Are you going to do roll call vote? We're set to vote? Okay. Please vote. Thank you. Next item is public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on items not appearing on our regular agenda. Because of restrictions contained in California law, City Council may not discuss or act on any item not on the agenda, but may briefly respond to statements made or ask a question for clarification. Also, a request from staff for a brief response may be asked to questions raised during public comment, and a matter may be agendized perhaps at a future meeting. Do we have requests to speak during this time?
Yes, we do. We have Juanita Odenbaugh.
All right. First speaker, Juanita Odenbaugh.
Good evening, Mayor McNaboe and City Councilmembers. I'm here to ask some questions. I'd like an update on the West Coast Arborist wall that's supposed to be constructed. I want to know the timeline still, what's going on there. Also, I would like to thank the city manager for the letter I got in the mail. However, it was addressed to my father-in-law, so I don't understand that. So, yeah, we can correct that. It's John and Juanita Odenbaugh, same address, though. But thank you for that. We look forward to that. I'm mainly here to support my mother. My mother had a brief meeting with the city manager. She discussed some things that she felt helped, that she needed help with in regards to her neighbor rental. I'll need to say I'll cut it short because she's going to talk, but I expect better from our city manager. He basically told her to bake a cake or pie and go next door and resolve the issue. I saw two gentlemen here last meeting that came up, and they discussed how they couldn't get into their driveways, and I didn't see him telling them to go make them a cake and resolve it themselves and be neighborly. So, our due respect is, I appreciate it, and this needs to go on his record for saying such things. My mother's been a member of this community before it was even a city. She's raised six kids. She worked for Stairbroers Warehouse, and we're a little fed up with things in our neighborhood. So, she has things that she liked to say, and I'm here to support her. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Odenbaugh. Mr. City Manager, you'll follow up on that WCA timeline?
Sure. We're in review in the plant check for that wall, and it'll be on the west side of that property. So, it is in the works.
Okay. But is there an estimated time of completion?
I do not have a start date for that.
Okay. When do you think you will have?
Actually, I can get to Ms. Odenbaugh tomorrow or Thursday with a date on this timeline.
All right. Thank you. And additional requests to speak during this time?
Is Virginia Fernandez?
All right. Ms. Virginia Fernandez, please.
Mayor and City Council, I've been a resident of Grand Terrace before it became a city. Like my daughter said, I did raise my six children there. Anyways, the reason I'm here is I had come twice within the last, I'm going to say, five weeks to follow up on something that I had filled out regarding on the north side would be Monverne, and then on the other side would be Newport Avenue. There's Canal Street. Right now, the tumbleweeds have grown considerably. They have at least tripled. Nothing has been done about the cleanup in that area. Opposite side, you would be on the freeway side, and they have already cleaned that area, and that's Southern California Edison, at least twice. There are people that walk that little trail. They make their own trail from Canal Street all the way, I guess, crossing over to Monverne to where the elementary school on a daily walks. But I guess that was my concern. It's just the people that are walking, and they shouldn't have to deal with tumbleweeds that are, they're, they could be, I think, endangered with them. If they were to fall in them or anything like that, that's very, could be very serious for the city of Grand Terrace. Also, on Canal Street and Monverne, the same street, I mean, I'm sorry, pardon, there are some magnolia trees that are right there on the Smart Time Liquor Store, and I noticed that the people that clean that area, what they do is they just sweep all the leaves. They just blow all the leaves into the street, so they're on both sides of the street. Nobody picks them up. Is the city supposed to do it? Are the people that blow all that into the street supposed to do it? I mean, I'd like to see my part of the city looking nice, you know? So, like I said, I finally came and wrote a paper to see the city manager, and then he walked in, and I talked to him, but I don't think he gave me an answer or a resolution or anything was being done. Now, we're entering into the, going into the sixth week since I originally wrote the two papers regarding the cleanups of those areas. And that's, that's what I'm sharing with you. So, I would like to find out what, how a kind of a resolution, that I need to speak to someone higher up regarding the situation. I mean, I love my city, and I like to see, keep cleaning, even if it's in the area where I live, you know? So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fernandez. I appreciate you taking the time. And, Mr. City Manager, what will your follow-up be on this?
Sure. And thank you for coming down and visiting. I had a great conversation with you. We have the weeds and that on our cleanup agenda, so it's on the list to be taken. I mean, we have a list of things we take care of. They are on the weeds. There are some big tumbleweeds, especially the Edison property, which code enforcement is following up on. And then shelter had some concerns with the property next door, and we've opened a code enforcement case on that to resolve some of the weed issues on that.
Okay. And the blowing of leaves out into the street?
We're working with the Smart Time and the center owner to make sure that their landscape people pick up after themselves.
Okay. Any timeline on those items?
The weeds will be in the next three or four weeks, and the remainder, you know, Smart Time, it becomes an issue of just working with them to make sure that doesn't happen. And like I said, we have a code enforcement case open with our neighbor to deal with those weeds.
Okay. Thank you. Any other requests to speak during this time?
No other requests.
All right. I'll close public comment and move on to our public hearings, of which we have two. The first tonight is a public hearing and adoption of resolution relating to rate increases for solid waste, recycling, disposal service, and waste collection. It's a rate increase. The process we will follow, I've stated the hearing item. We'll have announcement of any ex parte communications, conflict of interest, and/or recusals. Are there any of those to announce at this time? All right. Seeing none. Staff will give us a presentation and recommendation on the public hearing item. After that, council will ask questions of staff. We will open the public hearing to allow public testimony in favor and against the public hearing item. We'll close the public hearing, and then it'll come back to council for deliberation on the public hearing item, and then a vote. And so, we will go on to our staff presentation. Ms. Shanita Hilton.
Thank you, Mayor McNaboe.
Excuse me, Tillman. Ms. Shanita Tillman.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor McNaboe, Mayor Protem, and City Council. Shanita Tillman, management analyst. I'm here with you to present the public hearing for refuse rate adjustments. The following supports the 2030 Vision Statement. Goal number one: Ensure fiscal viability by ensuring appropriate cost recovery for services. The City of Grand Terrace contracts with Burttec to provide refuse hauling services. Rate increases will be proposed for both residential, multifamily, and commercial customers. The last rate adjustment was approved December 2021 and went into effect January 1, 2022. To meet Prop 218 requirements, a notice of public hearing was sent to all Burttec customers on May 27, 2022. Tonight's presentation will go over the following: Residential refuse rates for 96-gallon containers and 64-gallon containers; how our rates compare to surrounding cities; and commercial refuse rates. Residential refuse rate increase for the 96-gallon, the current rate is $30.62. The proposed rate is $33.25, a cost difference of $2.63. For a 64-gallon trash barrel, it's $29.12. The proposed rate is $31.64, a cost difference of $2.52. And for my coffee drinkers, that would be less than a Starbucks latte. The rates in comparison to our surrounding cities, in the bottom, you'll see the current rates for our surrounding cities, and in yellow, that's the difference between their previous rate and their new rate. Grand Terrace, our rate, our proposed rate is $33.25, and the difference between this year and last year, or earlier this year, is a $2.63 difference. Some of the other cities, such as Rancho, has a $6.05 difference between their last year rate and this year rate. And I'll leave that for a moment in case anyone wants to view. Okay. The commercial proposed rate increase for commercial front load, 96-gallon, excuse me, 96-gallon barrel, is $43.65. The proposed rate is $43.90. For a three-yard bin serviced one day a week, the current rate is $2.06, excuse me, $2.06, $206.95. The proposed rate will remain the same. In conclusion, if approved, rates would go into effect August 1, 2022. To date, we have received for-return protest, and at the conclusion of the following presentation by Michael Heffman of Burttec Waste Industries, staff is recommending a public hearing to be conducted to consider the adoption of rate increases for solid waste collection services and to adopt a resolution setting forth new solid waste collection rates. And before you is Michael Heffman of Burttec.
Thank you for that report.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of the council, Mike Aragon with Burttec Waste. I am going to introduce Michael Heffman with Burttec. And this is the first time Michael has been here. He will be giving the presentation on the SB 1383 program. One thing I'd like to mention with regard to Shanita's presentation tonight, the rates that have been presented include the entire cost for the new program, so it is not just our normal annual rate adjustment with those cost adjustments, but they also include the program that we are moving forward with compliance with the state for 1383. So, with that being said, I'll turn it over to Mr. Heffman. And, oh, one other, one other thing that I did want to mention, and I'll probably have to take a look at some of the rates, and we're only dealing with what information we have right now, staff is, excuse me, but some of the comparative costs, there are a handful of cities that have not approved their 22 rates. And so, I don't know if some of those are 21 rates that are just in place now. Some of the rates for, for cities won't go, because of 1383 adjustments, we're not scheduled to go forward till August or September. So, just to keep that in mind as, as you look at your comparative rates. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Heffman, and then I'll come back to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Aragon. Mr. Heffman?
Thank you, Mike. Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem, members of the council. As mentioned, my name's Michael Heffman. I'm the Municipal Services Manager with Burttec, and this evening, we're going to take a look at the municipal program overview requirements outlined in Senate Bill 1383. So, tonight's slides will include a brief program overview. The legislative requirements outlined in 1383 will touch on the collection system requirements, the education and outreach requirements, edible food procurement, enforcement, and the various reporting elements outlined in the regulation. Now, 1383 was adopted in 2016, but the regulations went into effect January 1 of this year. In that effort, Burttec put together a program overview, which detailed each of the aspects just aforementioned in the agenda in a written form, with some extra detail made available to city staff. The regulation summary, as we call it, outlined the program objectives. It included a checklist of all the requirements that are done, and was actually adopted by CalRecycle as an education tool on their education and outreach website page. Now, the legislative requirements outlined in SB 1383 include various enforcement mechanisms in the regulation. One of those, of course, is adopting a mandatory organic waste disposal reduction ordinance, which was done here in the city in November 2021, and was through ordinance number 335. Now, once the ordinance is adopted, collection programs and the rest of the components associated with 1383 can begin to be developed. First is with the commercial collection containers and programs. So, commercial generators will still be provided a trash, a recycle, a green waste, and a food waste container where eligible and where the generation requirements are met. One thing with 1383 that has changed is the state has now mandated the color requirements. Some of you may have seen our white recycle bins out within the community. Those, over time, will be changed out to now be blue, similar to the blue barrels that you have at your residence. And so, our colors, the gray for trash works, and the green and brown for green waste and food waste, respectively, all comply with the regulations, but the blue bins will have to change throughout the community. One thing I'd also like to point out are the decals, both for commercial and, as we'll see on the next slide, with residential. 1383 requires that all the decals on every container in the city be updated to include graphics and text that indicate both what is allowed in the container and also what's prohibited to be put in that container. Now, with the residential collections, the black barrels, the blue, and the green organics are already placed throughout the community, and those comply with those 1383 requirements that I was just mentioning and are similar to the commercial bins. One thing that will be added, and you'll see over time through the changeout of containers, is that the lids of each of the containers will begin to incorporate what are called in-mold labels. They're labels molded into the lid that depict those items that are acceptable in each container and those items that are prohibited in each container, and there's examples of each of those labels below. We're also getting ready to begin the food waste at home collection program, to where residents will be asked to bag their food waste and place it into the green organics cart for recycling. Education and outreach is important with any legislation introduction. The requirements are outlined within the regulation. They include a variety of outreach methods to inform customers, printed material and collateral, of course, that outlines methane gas reduction benefits, organic waste reduction, how to recycle, proper container utilization. There's also the labels, as I discussed, and down the road, there'll be route audits and waste characterizations to document the progress of each of the generators, and that'll give us some opportunities to provide feedback, and also meetings such as, presentations such as this, and meetings maybe in the Coannis Club, for example, or Rotary or other local establishments where information can be presented to the public at large. Some of the educational material already sent to residents and commercial businesses includes sustainability updates, which outline at a high level the 1383 and why it was implemented and why it's adopted. Newsletters will also include some articles pertaining to organic food waste. And as you see in the bottom right corner there, the one that was sent out in January 22, 2022, was directed specifically to commercial businesses. Commercial businesses and those generators all have their own set of requirements for not only food waste and organics recycling, but there's requirements to train their employees, to look after their tenants. If you receive a new tenant at a building, they're supposed to educate them about where the bins are placed and what material goes. There are also edible food container requirements if they are identified as a tier one or tier two business. So, there's a lot of regulations for commercial business that are outlined in the information, and this is required by 1383 to present to the commercial businesses. On the residential side, in June, postcards were mailed out in preparation of the upcoming residential food waste. On the top is what we combine, call our trifold brochure. It's Food Waste at Home. That's the same picture that was on our residential slide earlier, but it lists a bunch of FAQs, frequently asked questions and answers about the food waste recycling program, and it reminds residents on what goes where in each of the containers. There was also a graphic on the oversized postcard down below that showed the residential food waste recycling in a graphic form. I think a lot of different methods and modes are used to communicate properly with each of the residents in the community, and in this way, we can depict what goes into the green barrel and how the food waste is supposed to be prepared for the green barrel prior to the program beginning. Now, I mentioned edible food as one of the requirements. So, 1383 requires that commercial generators are divided into two groups, tier one and tier two, if they qualify. Not all businesses will be in these two groups. Tier one requirements began January 1 of this year, and it focuses on wholesale food producers, food production, and tier two requirements do not begin to January 2024. But tier two steps the requirements down to larger restaurants, health establishments, hospitals, large venue events. And what these requirements are for tier one and tier two is that they divert the maximum amount of edible food before it spoils to food recovery services or organizations such as Feeding America, for example, or maybe a local church or community group. And so, what the regulation requires is that these qualified businesses get into an agreement with these food recovery organizations, so that way, when edible food has not been sold or produced, or maybe it was packaged improperly, but the food was great, rather than disposing of it and sending it to the landfill before it spoils, that food will then be moved over to the food recovery organizations for those who are food insecure. Procurement is another section of 1383. So, now that organic waste is being recycled and diverted, both from the commercial and soon-to-be residences within the community. 1383 requires that that material be taken to designated facilities and turned into renewable organic waste products. One of the most common renewable organic waste product that's available today is compost and mulch. Burttec takes the material to our Agomansha facility, and there we will turn that material into compost and mulch, in which it's provided back into the community in items such as compost giveaways. With compost and mulch, 1383 has certain requirements where it dictates exactly how much each community is required to procure through the use of calculating their population numbers. So, 1383 will take a look at their population of each jurisdiction. They have a formula that's outlined in the legislation, and it outlines approximately how much compost or mulch each community is required to receive, along with other renewable organic waste products. Part of the procurement also includes purchasing. City staff will be required to purchase, in many instances, paper products and paper, including file folders, Xerox copy paper, even toilet tissue that has recycled content material of at least 30%. And all those requirements need to be documented and tracked, of course. Now, enforcement. So, with 1383, there are enforcement requirements. Each year, we're required to submit, each jurisdiction, rather, is required to submit an annual report to the state detailing the progress of the programs to demonstrate how effective the implementation of the programs and the education and outreach has been. And we have to do what are called route reviews and waste evaluations to check on the field and on the ground, essentially, how well the program is, or the success of the program, rather. And with that, enforcement may include code enforcement, department training, information collection. There's a specific area for complaint inspections and investigations, and of course, record keeping. Now, I think I've referenced record keeping a couple of times. There are actually 16 specific sections in the legislation in 1383 that require some sort of document process procedure to be reviewed. So, as you can imagine, there's extensive databases that need to be developed and used to ensure that we can capture each one of these components, which have numerous subcomponents associated with them, to document and validate how successful the program is in each community. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mike or myself, if anybody would have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Heffman. I have one question on your last slide.
Yes, ma'am.
With all the documentation, is this a support that Burttec will be offering to the city, or does that rest on the shoulders of city staff?
We will offer that support through the database that's already set up and established that can track and document and record each one of these 16 regulatory requirements.
And that's, that's inclusive of the contract that we have with you?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Further questions? Mayor Protem Hussey?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to know how they're going to enforce it. When you say enforcement, code enforcement, I mean, who's going to subsidize the city for that? I mean, we're going to be trash police now? I mean, this is seems, with all the problems that we do have in the state, I'm sure you heard this before. Another question is, you're saying we have to take so much compost, lines if we don't take the compost, and we don't want the compost, or we can't get, you know, the residents to take it. Is the city going to get fined for not taking that compost?
Well, with the enforcement, on the first question, there is a provision that has been referred to as trash police in many different been referred to as trash police in many different environments where we have to actually go out onsite and flip lids and check bins to make sure the right material is placed into the right container. Now, that goes for the commercial side. There are waste evaluations that we can conduct on the residential side, so it's not in somebody's front yard, right on the curb side, looking into barrels, but we can take an aggregate of material, evaluate it, and that still meets regulatory requirements. Now, the first two years of thirteen eighty-three, this year and next, are really driven to be an education and outreach. So enforcement programs down at the code enforcement level really don't begin until twenty twenty-four. And then it would follow the city's guidance on what level of enforcement would be needed. As for procurement, there is a significant amount. I believe the city of Grand Terrace has approximately six hundred tons of year compost is the approximate number, I don't have the exact, that would be required if compost were the only item to be selected, to be procured. Mulch is another one that could be used in medians. So there are different applications. Compost and mulch can also be used in city parks and fields, not only just for residents and giveaways, but there are also provisions for haulers and composters to be entered into a direct service provider agreement to where the city can cause the compost to be used in other applications outside of city boundaries, yet still count towards procurement within the city. I hope that answers your questions.
Yeah, well, you know, I know we're looking at the rates and stuff, but the question, another question is, how much does this cost in Burt Tech to implement all this new program?
Councilman, I can, I can speak to that. In the rate worksheets that we've provided to the city, there is a cost component to pay for, as the mayor mentioned. For example, we have a separate recording and reporting service because there is a tremendous amount of record keeping and monthly updates that ultimately will have to be sent to Cal Recycle. The auditing of barrels and bins, sending a team out to look for violators, unfortunately. These are all provisions within the, within the regulations. Believe me, I don't believe we would want to do something along these lines, but I think as I've mentioned before at previous council meetings, the state has created this law. And we lobbied for, to curtail it to some level. It didn't happen. So now there's a law in place and they are putting that law, or putting cities in a position where they are responsible now. And so as Burt Tech comes in and addresses these issues with regard to the regulation, we are the bridge between the state and the city being in compliance. The city ultimately chooses, I want to participate or I don't want to participate. However, the state has a pretty significant penalty for municipalities not being in complete compliance. They're giving cities up, as I said, this was the year, January of twenty twenty-two, when we needed to be in compliance. We have bought some time throughout twenty twenty-two, but the state is going to be checking. And by twenty-four, they will start imposing fines if you are not in complete compliance.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Allen.
Thanks, Mayor. The gentleman, yeah, you, that was speaking earlier, you mentioned that Grand Terrace gets like about six hundred tons? And so I was just, about how much does six hundred tons cost?
I don't have that number.
Maybe roughly. Is it in the hundreds, the thousands, five-figure, six-figure?
The, the cost to procure and, and develop the, whether it's mulch or compost, runs anywhere from ten dollars a ton to twenty-five dollars a ton.
Okay.
So you have to, so there's a, there's a certain amount of tonnage that we give to the city at no cost. But the, the level of mulch and/or compost that the city is responsible for, they would have to purchase. We are still working with the state, trying to reduce that requirement for all cities. There are other cities that are probably three or four times the amount of compost that, that they are asking Grand Terrace to procure. So we are working with Cal Recycle virtually daily. We meet, staff meets with them as well. And we've posed these questions to them from a standpoint of practicality and they are going back and kind of rethinking their drink a little bit. So we don't know what the outcome of that will be, but we are preparing for the worst. We are, as Michael mentioned, trying to set up and working with city staff, not only your local vendors, operators, but whatever we're going to do on a city level to try to check the box on as many tons as we can.
Yeah, okay, great. Oh, one, another question, you had a previous slide and it had a picture of the different cans and there's a brown can. Who gets brown cans and who doesn't and who doesn't and why?
Right, here's a slide I believe you're referencing.
Yeah.
So these are on the commercial collections.
Okay.
So for commercial generators, if they have food waste.
Oh, okay.
The brown container would be used, so it would not be everyone. And same with green waste, a lot of places may not have large landscapes, so they wouldn't necessarily be required to have a green waste container.
Okay. I thought, one of the things that I was thinking about in this is the, you know, this whole enforcement thing, and that's going to be an ongoing struggle, I think. And I thought that, how could we encourage the residents to want to do this and also to make it really, really obvious to them? And I got to thinking, what if, what if that black can, size of that black can got cut in half and made cheap? But then if they needed, if they wanted a second one, it was very expensive. And then they would know, hey, I can't put as much in this black can that I used to put in. I can't put food waste anymore. I got to save that tiny bit of space for what, the only thing I can legally put in here. You know, it's things like that I was thinking about, you know, that might encourage people and make them totally aware of, I got this little tiny black can, what the heck? I better learn what I got to do with it or I'm going to have a mess. Something like that. And because in the same thing, contact, I also heard or was listening to another presentation about this issue a while back, that, you know, the trash patrol, somehow there's going to be a, they're going to have the authority to stop a truck and I think a truck can hold like three hundred houses, something like that they said, and they can, they'll dump that truck right where it sits and they'll pick through it, the inspectors will, and they'll know, if they find violations in there, they'll find every resident that that truck has been picked up from. Have you heard anything like that?
No, I think what it is, councilman, is maybe some people taking what the audits are and then kind of expanding on those a little bit. But to address your first issue, even Cal Recycle, we're looking at, in a very hopeful situation, that each house produce five pounds of food waste a week, okay? Because that's on, in general, what we're seeing or what has been seen or evaluated from a standpoint of what's in your, your black trash can. So your black trash can probably holds up to two hundred pounds of waste in general. Of that, a very small percentage of it is food waste. So reducing the size of that can doesn't mean that a hundred pounds of capacity is going to be food waste. So that's why we're, the program for residential calls for you to put your food waste in a, in a bag of some type and throw that bag, and you could have one a day, you could have as many as you like, and put it within your green waste container. It can't be mixed with the, with the green waste because once it is mixed with the green waste, it contaminates the green waste. And the only thing we can do with that is make compost. Unfortunately, the amount of green waste that we collect, the composting capabilities, and we're probably one of, if not the largest composter in the region, i- there's not enough capacity for that. Our only alternative would be to take it out to the low desert and, and use one of our large farms out there to compost it, but then the, the transportation costs would be, would be too severe. So it, it's best to do the bagging program, sort it from the bag. You can use your, your trash container and you do have a smaller container if people find that, if they're doing a really good job on recycling and they're putting their grass where they need to put their grass, in the green container and their food, then your overall size of trash, then if that's the case, yeah, you can reduce that and we do have a smaller container that's, that's available. As far as the inspections, I, I don't know. We do the inspections and the material can be inspected in one of two ways. Either we can go out on the street and lift the lids of these containers and search for contaminants, whether you're contaminating your trash with organics or recyclables, or whether you're contaminating the blue bin or the, or the green bin. We've chosen to, with those samplings, collect them with a, with a route, take it back to our facility. At our facility, we, we put the load on the ground and then we go through that material, as you mentioned, to identify if there is a significant percentage of organics that has been put into that, into that load. And that load that's collected, we do know the addresses that went into that load. So our first step, if we do find a high level of contamination with organics, is to notify those individuals that were part of that audit, that somewhere in that audit, somewhere in that collection, someone is putting organics in the trash and they shouldn't be.
Well, Mike, let me, let me point out some, or I don't want to interrupt you, excuse me for doing that, but.
Do you have a further question?
Do you remember, it is actually.
Okay.
You, I'm sure you remember, because we were together at the solid waste advisor test, we're saying, the beta test that was done in Rancho.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I would just, I just feel like that there was some good lessons learned from that that could be applied here.
And so your question is?
No, that's all, that's all, Mayor, go ahead.
Okay, I'm sorry.
All right. Further questions? Councilmember Wilson.
Say I've got a, lots about a ten thousand square foot lot and say the house covers up thirty-five hundred square foot of it and hardscape and so on. What would be the average a person could use? I'm assuming that most of this would be composted, go in the planter areas, and is it suitable for spreading on the top of your lawn as well? I mean, I'd like to know what the nature.
Yes, compost could be used as a top dressing, if you will.
Okay.
Or as a mulch on your lawn during certain times of the season, of course, and I would refer to specific publications as to the exact timing and the type of grass in the lawn, but also in your planters. I think the recommendations are approximately three inches of depth mixed with the soil to add that amendment, to provide that aeration, to put the organic material back into the ground, because it is composted materials, decomposed materials, so you add soil stability, you add aeration, you reduce the amount of more water required with the plants, and you put a lot of minerals and nutrients back in for the plants and the root growth, so.
So what would my, what would my average requirement be then for a single-family house with those parameters, those assumptions?
I, it would depend, I mean, specifically on the size of the planters, the depth, if you're putting in new planters or not, I mean, there are quite a few variables in there.
Yeah, tacky. You know, what I'm trying to determine is, is what am I going to tell a homeowner when they call me up and say, I've got all this stuff? What am I supposed to do with this stuff? And how often can I put this stuff on various things? You know, I mean, we're the ones that get the phone calls, you guys, some of them.
Councilman, I don't understand, maybe when they have all this stuff, what is your, what is your?
My parameter was, and I'll say it again, ten thousand square foot lot minus thirty-five hundred square foot coverage on a hardscape and house slab, it'll leave you about sixty-five hundred square foot worth of planter area and grass, just as an average.
So a homeowner, we have, we've had several giveaways here at the, at the city, and they can take as much mulch or compost as they, as they can carry. They wouldn't have, they would have to take it to their, their home. It's not distributed, if I'm understanding you correctly, and I, I may not be, distributing it to each household, but they can come and get mulch, put it out there and therefore, okay, that's being used, as many homes as want, that we want.
Well, an average Joe, though, I mean, not to interrupt, but average Joe's not going to know how much that's supposed to be.
Mm-hmm.
You know, they're just, these people are not farmers, as a rule, even though some of us dress like farmers and stuff, but, but they don't let me wear denim at these meetings anymore, so. I'm, I'm thinking, you know, how many pounds, because if we're responsible for getting rid of or using a certain amount, about how much would an average residential unit use to be able to make the quota? Because, you know, I'm trying to get there on the numbers.
Yeah.
And, you know, if we're responsible for six hundred, six hundred, what was it, six hundred tons?
Well, and again, councilman, that was the maximum amount based on product availability and my recollection right here, but to answer your question about the, the landscape and the planters and surface area, I, I could calculate that for you and get back to you on an average square foot and your parameters, but there are a lot of variables. So if there's new plannings that are required, like, let's say you have a plain landscape, then I think you would really want to take and add that compost to three-inch depth until it into the soil, have it sit, and really have it be set up prior to planting your new plants, maybe the local nursery to set up a whole new landscape design. If you have existing plants and established plants that are maybe even mulched or have already covers on there, then your amounts of compost would be more sporadic and as needed and, and based on the, the new area or maybe a new planning. So I, I think there's a lot of variables that, that would kind of.
Let me ask you that, then, under that, are we talking about once a quarter or are we talking about every month?
Well, and, and again, if, trying to.
Now, you see what I'm, you know why I'm asking the questions?
No, absolutely.
Because we're going to get them and we just don't, we don't know the answer at this point.
We've had giveaways before. We could, we could look at as often as quarterly having a giveaway. We'll bring roll-off boxes full of material, there's probably ten tons of material in each box.
Wow.
When we've given some giveaways before, probably go through one or two boxes, we could go through as many as three or four.
So what, what would you use to, to, to handle the stuff? Because I know if you want to go out and get some stuff and put it in there, whether it was manure or whatever, you, you can get it in plastic bags, but what are they supposed to pick it up with?
They can, we've seen them at these giveaways use a thirty-two gallon trash can.
Oh, okay.
And they can fill those up. They come with pickup trucks, trailers.
Sure.
And bags, if you want, you, you want to kind of double bag it, throw it in the back of their car. But anything like that, and if you look at, go to Home Depot, you get a Kellogg's bag of, of mulch, it's somewhere between forty-five and fifty pounds.
Mm-hmm.
You can kind of estimate to get to where you're saying it. And maybe if I'm doing a whole landscape, I'd order a pallet of that material, there's probably fifty bags on that. So fifty, you know, you might have close to a ton of materials that you can put into your, into your landscape to get it where it needs to go. Or if you have a new home builder and he's putting in landscapes, then the city can say, hey, part of the stipulations or the requirements for building is that you need to get this material and use it as part of your soil management.
Well, the great thing about this is that we will fertilize the heck out of everything and then starve it for water and it'll turn brown anyway, so.
Perfect.
Thank you for that information, though, that's, that's.
Sorry, we kind of took the long way around.
That's all right. Thank you.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you. Mike, you know, the question is, doing with experience, but what about the smell and the insect and rodent problem? Are we going to endure any increase on this? Because I know my mother had a compost drum and it was disgusting and, you know, I had a, you know, it was just a fly attraction, so even like when I do plant grass and put stuff there, you know, but, have they thought about this?
Yeah, so the compost, the composting process happens at our location. When we bring it back, literally, if it's properly cured compost, you could pick it up and, and smell it. It has a earthy smell, it's not a foul smell in any way, shape, or form. Sometimes you smell, you get that foul smell and that compost has not been properly cured and that's what takes tons. cured and that's what takes time to do that. But at the end of the day, when it breaks down, decomposes and it is composted, it's been screened, as we screen it, uh, it's beautiful. It looks just like a dark soil. And then, um, uh, we do have mulch and mulch is a little more fragrant, if you want to put it that way. And so, uh, but we have both that are available, even when the mulch gets out and it does have a, it does have a bit of an odor with mulch, uh, probably within a week, um, to eight days, seven to 10 days maybe, um, that, that does dissipate, but the mulch has a little more fragrance than, than the compost would. But as far as the material, you have that material in your, in your trash container now, the food waste, we're just asking you to separate it from that bag and bag it so it will really kind of keep the, keep the control of, of odors.
Thank you.
Councilmember Allen.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, I understand that there were four protest letters and I'd just like to know who they were from and if, if they were residents or if they were commercial.
I'm going to talk about that when we open the public hearing.
Oh, that'd be just great, then. I'll just wait for them.
Very good. Any further questions of staff or our contractors? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. So we'll open the public hearing and allow public testimony in favor or against the public hearing item. And, um, are there any people in the room that would like to speak on this item? All right, may we get you to come up here, but we need you to fill out a request to speak for him as well. Oh, you can fill it out after if you want.
I'll take it after, it's over.
Yeah, we just need you to fill one out before you leave the chamber, so, sorry I wasn't clear. Ms. Fernandez, please speak.
Okay, um, regarding, uh, I understand what they're, what, what the state wants us to do, but I can tell you that there's so many people, I mean, when I take my dog in my truck to, uh, take my, to, to the park, um, and it's trash day, I'm amazed at what people do. They don't care what trash cans they put their trash in, you know, they do not have that consideration, you know? Uh, unfortunately, I'm the type of person that'll sit every, every two weeks and take my, uh, K cups and peel the plastic off to empty the coffee for, I can put on my plants, the grinds on it, and, and then keep the little white plastic and pile them up and put them in the recycle bin because it's plastic. But there's a lot of people that do not even think about that. They'll just put the garbage, regular garbage into the recycle, vice versa, and I really wish that there would be a miracle that we, people will realize that where we are at this time in our lives, that we have to be careful, cause look at the fires, look at, look at the, everything that's happening in this world. So we need to take consideration, but there's people that are not going to do it. And, uh, I just wish, and I hope and I pray, that people really realize that they need to think of the future of their children, their grandchildren, their great grandchildren, of, of, of what to do, because the state of California, I think is the only state that really is working with emission control. I know we have high gas prices, but it's all, it's, there's a reason for it, you know? Uh, we would be in a really deep, deep, terrible, uh, breathing situation, uh, in this state of California if it wasn't for what, unfortunately, it's costing us money, but that's, that's all part of it, you know? Uh, and, uh, I just wish that we could have some kind of a miracle happen where people will start saying, okay, I gotta start doing this right, not just for me, but for the, our future of our children and grandchildren.
All right. Thank you so much.
Okay.
All right.
So, now I fill this out, right?
Thank you very much. Next request to speak?
Johan Gallo, please.
Okay, Mr. Johan Gallo.
I gotta hand it to what Burt Tech has to deal with, because, um, the state of California has made millions of dollars on and through the Department of Toxic Substance. And the work that they go through for dumpster diving, to collect all the evidence, to go after businesses, businesses have spent millions of dollars for improper disposal of items in their businesses. And so I'm in support of the rate increase because I know what they're dealing with. We're dealing with it on the business side. And I don't care if you're Target, Costco, it doesn't matter. Many businesses have removed trash cans from their parking lot because of the risks that they're at, because of improper and illegal dumping that happens on their, on their watch, that's not even their responsibility. So I do support it. I wish there was a better way to deal with some of this stuff, because on the business side of it, it's horrendous. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Gallo. Any other requests to speak today, either in the room or on Zoom?
No requests.
No. All right. So with our protests, this was a 218 process, did we receive a majority of protests against this item?
We did not.
Okay. Did we have any that were written that, that, uh, we want to summarize as far as for and against?
Nothing, I don't remember.
All right. So we'll close the public hearing portion of it and come back to council for deliberation and, uh, vote. Any comments from my colleagues?
I just, I'd like to, uh, see what the wording is of the recommendation.
All right. Ms. Tillman, if you could, if you could give your recommendation again that you recommended at the beginning of your presentation.
Sure, let me. Okay, staff is recommending a public hearing to consider the adoption of the rate increases for solid waste collection services.
And that we did.
And adopt a resolution setting forth new solid waste collection rates.
Okay. So pretty much what we're looking at here is the resolution for the solid waste rates that were proposed.
Okay, Mayor, I'll make a, I'll move staff recommendation.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Allen, a second by Mayor Protem Hussey. Any further discussion on this item? All right, seeing none. Are we ready to vote? All right, please vote. Vote is unanimous. Thank you. And thank you for, for filling that out. I appreciate that. All right, so we will move on to our second public hearing, which is a landscape and lighting assessment district 89 dash one public hearing and a consideration of adoption of resolution ordering the levy and collection of assessments and therefore the approval of agreements with the county for the collection of that money. And so we have with us management analyst Shanita Tillman, one more time.
Thank you, Council. The following supports the 2030 vision statement, goal number one, ensure our fiscal viability by ensuring appropriate cost recovery for services. In 1989, the city required developers of track 13364 to form an assessment district number 89 dash one for the purpose of maintaining landscaping and lighting serving new projects. Tracks 14264 and 14471 were annexed into the district as annexation number one, and there have been five subsequent annexations for a total of seven tracks. Zone one is track 13364 Canal. Zone two is track 14264, Force City Phase Two. Zone three is track 14471, Oriole. Zone four is track 17766, Greenbrier. Zone five, track 18793, Palomino. Zone six, track 18071, Jaden. And zone seven, 18604, Tesoro slash Van Buren. The total assessment for 20, for fiscal year 2022, 2023, of those combined seven zones or tracks is $60,816.13. Staff is recommending a public hearing, uh, the adoption of a resolution approving the engineers' annual levy report and ordering the levy and collection of assessments within the city of Grand Terrace Landscape and Lighting District for fiscal year 2223, and approve the auditor, controller, treasurer, tax collector agreements for collection of special services, fees and assessments for the district and the city for fiscal, excuse me, fiscal year 2223.
All right. Thank you, Analyst Tillman. Before we move forward, are there any, uh, council members that want to announce any ex parte communications, conflict of interest, or the need to recuse themselves on this item? All right, seeing none. Um, if you would, please, um, what questions does council have of staff? All right. No, no questions. That was a wonderful, wonderful report. So we will open it up to public hearing. Are there any requests to speak on this item? I'm seeing looks of puzzlement. I'm opening up the public hearing. Are there requests to speak on this item?
No requests, sorry.
Okay. Um, then we will close the public hearing, but I will ask, was there a, uh, was there a majority of protests on this item since it is a 218?
There was not, Madam Mayor.
All right. Well, then we will close the public hearing and bring it back to council for further deliberation and consideration of a motion.
I move adoption of the recommendations, one, two and three.
All right.
I'll second it.
Thank you. We have a motion by Councilmember Robles, a second by Councilmember Allen. Any further discussion on this item? All right, seeing none, please vote.
The vote is unanimous.
All right. Thank you. So we will move on to unfinished business, of which we have none, and new business we took care of. Uh, requests for future agenda items, we have none, so we'll move to council communications, beginning with Councilmember Jeff Allen.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, you know, I only wanted to thank the residents that are listening out there for controlling the fireworks the way they did this last July 4th. There was, I mean, I could tell from where I was at that there was not near the intensity that we've had in the past, uh, preceding the firework, the holiday or afterwards. I know there was some and, but I just want to throw that out there and say, um, it seems to be getting better every year, a little bit that people respect the city ordinance, and so I want to thank them for doing that.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Allen. Councilmember Doug Wilson.
Uh, just a reminder to, to the public, uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, this COVID-19 thing or what the various derivations of it is a real thing. Uh, I, we did all our requisite shots and so on, but we still ended up, me and my wife, as in we, uh, still ended up catching it. And we went through the requisite timeframe to, uh, to, to have it and get over it and to get healthy again. Uh, my wife and I are both in our seventies and, and it fortunately wasn't as, uh, severe for us, so I think the inoculations must have helped. Uh, I can't think of another reason why, but, uh, I, I think it's, uh, something that we have, still have to take seriously. It's not gone. Uh, it, it might even get to a point where we may go back to the mask prot- protocol because of the variants. And so I would caution all those, regardless of age, that if you have a legal right to the inoculations, that you should do that. So that's all I have, Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Wilson. Councilmember Sylvia Robles.
Um, I have nothing, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Robles. Mayor Protem, Bill Hussey.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I kind of piggyback, um, Councilmember Allen's, uh, comment about fireworks. Yes, I didn't hear as much and I'm only wondering, I didn't hear as much because of inflation, nobody had COVID money, so, um, but the thing is, I did get calls from residents and I, I don't know if the sheriffs have, that they wrote any citations this year. I know we did have a house fire this year and, and, um, you know, I went and talked to the family the following day and, um, so, you know, it can be devastating. I think since I've been on the council, it's like the third or fourth house fire since I've been on here. But what I'm going to tell the residents, when they said they, they want the council to demand to stop having legal fireworks, it was voted in by the voters, majority won. So if you want to stop that, you need to go get a petition, have people sign and bring it into the city clerk, so we could do it legally. Um, that's up to you and, you know, the city will work with you on that, to guide you in that right way. We just can't, I don't believe in taking away the rights of the voters. And, but, you know, um, and I know it's a big fundraiser for the, um, the youth programs and also one of the things was brought to have the council supply fireworks, you know, fireworks show. I don't think that's going to stop the legal fireworks or anybody else in doing, I think they're still do that. So there's numerous factors out there, but once again, if, if the voters want to have no more fireworks in Grand Terrace, that's up to the voters, my opinion, that they have to go get the petition signed and stuff for it. So I know a petition was signed to bring the fireworks in and they voted for it, but that's just the legal way to do it, so. But other than that, you know, I hope everybody did have a blessed Independence Day and celebrate it and, um, you know, and thank you for everybody who came out and voiced their opinions and, and, you know, uh, thank you and God bless you and have a good night. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I, uh, attended, uh, took part in the OmniTrans board meeting on July 8th. A lot of, um, giving away of money. I know, uh, Grand Terrace has been in a position to get money from OmniTrans in the past, but their Consolidated Transportation Service Agency funds projects went to Ontario Rialto foothill AIDS project and a Lutheran Social Services Southern California project. Now, there was one application that Rialto put in and they wanted to be able to subsidize bus passes for seniors and the, um, the Regional Mobility Partnership Board came back and said, we'd like you to, to look at this as a regional program, not just for one city at a time. So that might be something that we look for in the future, that we would be able to get through OmniTrans, some, uh, some, uh, subsidization for bus passes for our seniors. Um, we also reviewed a lot of policies and made changes and amendments. And, and the reason I bring that up is I think that it's a nice habit to be in to periodically bring forward policies and look for ways to update that, or maybe make clear things that were put in those policies that maybe aren't so clear anymore. They were when they were written, but they don't make sense now. And so that's, that's something we consider too, is maybe taking a few at a time every, every so often and just reviewing them and bringing them to council for, for review. Just something to think about. Um, the, um, we also closed a, a public hearing. We were looking for, um, we wanted, we wanted to accept federal transportation dollars and in order to do that, we had a public hearing to make sure that the public knew that we were going to be accepting, um, public, uh, federal, excuse me, federal transportation dollars for OmniTrans, but, but that is going to go through because nobody, nobody objected to it. And so, um, we, also San Bernardino County Transportation Authority and just a few ideas there, um, Interstate 10, Mount Vernon Avenue improvements, that's right here in our own backyard, and so those are going to be moving forward. There's going to be a little bit of issue with slowness on the I-10 coming up, but the Mount Vernon improvements in, uh, interchange onto Interstate 10 will probably make it worth it when it's finished. Interstate 10 Freight and Express Lane Project is, is on its way through as well, and that should hope to, help to relieve some of the congestion on the I-10. Measure I 2022 population estimates went into place. After we did the census, they went back and readjusted for each of the member agencies for their allotment of measure I funds, and so that affects us, although I don't think we get a whole lot more measure I, but I think our population increased as far as they were concerned, which was kind of interesting. Um, we did a capital project needs analysis for the region and we, this was really an interesting thing. We're a council of governments as well, and so we had a presentation from the Santa Ana Watershed Project Authority, and they're looking at a program that would do cloud seeding in, in this inland area to help en- enhance the amount of rain that we get, to help. to help enhance the amount of rain that we get, to help us with our, with our, alleviating our drought. So that'll be interesting as it moves forward to see if, if it really does help. And that was all I have. So we'll move to city manager communications. Mr. City Manager, do you have anything for us?
Two items. First, there is a, the second COVID shot clinic will be held in the community room on the 19th. So if you got your first shot, come back for seconds. And if you're ready for a booster, we will be here on the 19th to do that. Secondly, there continues to be work along Barton Road associated with the new building, the Wingstop Building. Compounding that, some point in the next three or four weeks, we will also begin paving that segment of Barton Road. So we're going to try and do that as night work, so it'll impact and have construction on top of construction. But as you pass through there the next few weeks, please, please be careful. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. We do have closed session item tonight. We have one item, which is a public employee performance evaluation pursuant to Government Code Section 54957B1, title City Manager. And so if you are not here with us when we come back, just know that we'll be adjourning our regular city council meeting to our next meeting on Tuesday, July 26, 2022, at 6:00 PM. And any request to have an item placed on a future agenda must be made in writing and submitted to the city clerk's office. The request will be processed in accordance with council procedures. And so I will be adjourned, or I will be recessing to closed session. But I do want to thank those of you who came out tonight and shared your perspectives and your issues with us. It, it's great to hear from you directly. Thank you so much. So at this time, we are in recess. All right. We'll reconvene to open session.
Mr. Allen, you playing with the lights?
The council met in closed session for one item, public employee performance evaluation pursuant to Government Code Section 54957B1, title City Manager. There were no reportable actions, but direction was given to staff. So at this time, we will adjourn our meeting. The next regular city council meeting will be held on Tuesday, July 26, 2022, at 6:00 PM. Any request to have an item placed on the future agenda item must be made in writing and submitted to the city clerk's office. The request will be processed in accordance with city council procedures. We are adjourned.